I agree with that. How do we do it?
There any people living in it who still have to bring them?
I didn't actually see him.
Yeah. Until you guys decide whether you can option.
He's not, I'm sure he did that, so.
Not. If it matters, I don't want to do it either.
Who was it? Why didn't they just call it two times?
So what'd they sign before?
The Monkeys? Were you? I don't know. Was it the other day? Four, twenty? Yes, it is. It's a baseball number.
I'd have been pissed if that was one of my things today.
I got one just late this week.
I'm not in any very sorry state on the road. Parkin, are you there?
No.
Granddaughter got her car out.
No.
Only part of it.
We're doing an official action wife, but it's not like the next day he's going to take that.
Let's see your good service.
Still working, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're busier now than we've been in two years. It's crazy up there.
Squeeze that last bit out of you, aren't you?
My guy's been working seven days a week for six months. Well, they canceled the second one for salary and they're looking at the same thing we're on.
I think they just, I think somebody's goofed up.
Jeff, how are you doing? You fed? Bad for an old guy.
Second time you heard that tonight. I don't want to hear it anymore.
Is it going to say this? It's my birthday, I can say it.
Not bad for a semi-old guy.
I know, it's right. New Year's was around here. I like that idea. New Year's was around here.
We're not going to have any fights here, are we? Please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for its saints, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Since we will not be here for the, for Christmas, the invocation will be dedicated for that. May our homes be filled with happiness and joy and the spirit of Christmas remain throughout the year. Lord, we thank you for all you have given us in the past year. We ask that you bestow upon us your greatest blessings for the coming year. Lord, open all of our hearts that we may find peace and unity throughout the world. Merry Christmas to all and Happy New Year. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Sahaski?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Here.
Alderman Thompson?
Here.
Alderman Woodward?
Here.
City Attorney David Hawthorne?
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you. First item.
Mayor, before we start, um, could we move number 10 to number 1? Historically, items of this nature are first, not last.
Yes. We can do that.
Thank you.
Would you please read that?
Whereas Daniel J. Vaughn passed from this life on November 12th, 2002, and whereas Daniel J. Vaughn was born in the city of Syracuse, he was a graduate of Cathedral High School and attended St. Andrew's Seminary in Rochester. And whereas Mr. Vaughn retired in 1999 as code enforcement bureau chief for the city of Fulton. Prior to that, he was a Syracuse firefighter for nine years and a code enforcement officer for New York State and the city of Syracuse. And whereas Daniel J. Vaughn was a communicant of Christ the King Church and a member of the Circus Metal Builders Club. And whereas Dan Vaughn is survived by his wife of 44 years, the former Sandra M. McDonnell, five daughters, Mary P. Baroga of Seminar, California, Deborah M. Taylor of Clay, Teresa A. Verratti of Cicero, Janice S. Mott of Baldensville, and Kathleen E. Walsh of Brewharton, two sons, Dr. Michael P. of San Antonio, Texas, and Stephen J. of Liverpool, and 15 grandchildren. Whereas the mayor and members of this common council share a great sense of loss with the family of the late Daniel J. Vaughn and do with the deepest regret take official notice of his passing. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official records of this common council meeting of December 17th, 2002, and copies of it transmitted to the immediate family of the late Daniel J. Vaughn.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. And with that, I would also like to go on record as saying that Dan Vaughn did just, I think, a tremendous job to turn around the code enforcement department for the city of Fulton, and the city is a better place today for all the work that he put in to modifying the code enforcement and bringing our property, a lot of our property, seeing that they were brought into compliance. And again, we were very sorry to hear of his passing and wish his family the best. Next item.
Resolve the city clerk's report for November 2002 and the amount of $6,082.85. It's hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
Motion? Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that the minutes of the council meeting of December 3rd, 2002 are hereby approved as per attached.
Motion? Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that the minutes of the budget meeting of December 7th, 2002 are hereby approved as per attached.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolve that the minutes of the budget meeting of December 7th, 2002 are hereby approved as per attached.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I'll abstain on that due to the fact I was out of state from business for that meeting. Okay. Any opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolve that Streeter and Van Sanford is named as agent of record for the city of Fulton for its liability insurance for a five-year term beginning January 1st, 2003 and expiring December 31st, 2007 is hereby approved.
I'll move it.
I'll second with comment.
Yes.
In the past, we had gone after quotes every three years, and I see this is going to be a five-year term. And I believe I understand, given the lack of competition, if you will, and as a result of 9/11. But I would, would like to suggest that if we do go forward with this, that we, we will review this liability program yearly via the insurance committee and perhaps even inquire of other companies for possible re-quote through our present agent, just to be sure that if anything changes, excuse me, in the interim, that we take advantage of any potential way to save money.
Well, I think that our, our agent is definitely looking to do that with, especially with some of the recommendations that he made to go along with the, the coverages this year.
Absolutely. It was a good package.
And we, we need to keep looking at it, and he has, he has come in and since then and gone over both the vehicle listings with us and the, the property, listings of property to see if the coverage was correct for each individual piece.
That's what I understood, too.
I'd just like to commend Chairman Cavallaro and the insurance committee for the excellent work that they did. I know they had a number of meetings and they obviously were looking to secure insurance monies that would be adequate coverage at the same time at the best possible price. So I think they did an excellent job.
Thank you. And the committee was a strong supporter of all of this, too.
We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Next is to accept the quote of Streeter and Van Sanford, the amount of $189,297.297.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolve that the city chairman be authorized to transfer $8,750 from the contingent account into the law account.
I'll move it.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas the Fulton Housing Authority, name the authority is the owner of certain real property and improvements commonly known as Pathfinder Courts Housing Project located 1100 Emery Street in the city of Fulton, County of Oswego, New York, which presently consists of 136 residential units situated on approximately seven acres of land. And whereas the physical condition of the project has dilapidated and deteriorated over time, yet the authority does not have sufficient resources available to remedy such dilapitation and deterioration. Whereas the authority desires to redevelop the project in order to provide the current tenants and others with improved, safe, decent, and affordable housing, which redevelopment contemplates, among other things, the renovation and rehabilitation residential rental units for persons and families of lower income. Whereas the assistance of private enterprise and the infusion of private capital are essential components to such redevelopment and the continued success of long-term viability of the project. Whereas the authority has indicated that the sale or lease of the project by the authority to a to-be-formed limited partnership or limited liability company designated by the authority or to the County of Oswego Industrial Development Agency is necessary to accomplish the proposed redevelopment of the project and to obtain the benefit of federal low-income housing tax credits for the project and a resulting infusion of private capital. Whereas Section 58-B of New York State Public Housing Law provides that a housing authority, in order to obtain the benefits of any federal program of assistance for housing of persons and families of low income, may sell or lease a housing project upon such terms and conditions as it deems appropriate, subject to the approval of the New York State Commissioner of Housing and Community Renewal in the local legislative body. Now therefore be it resolved at the common council, by the common council of the city of Fulton, New York, that the sale or lease of the project by the authority to a to-be-formed limited partnership or limited liability company designated by the authority or to the County of Oswego Industrial Development Agency is hereby authorized and approved, which sale or lease shall be upon such terms and conditions as the authority may deem appropriate. And be it further resolved that the mayor of the city, being hereby is authorized and directed to take any and all actions and execute any and all documents or instruments that may be necessary or desirable to carry out the intent of the foregoing resolution. And be it further resolved, further resolved that the foregoing resolution shall take effect immediately.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Your Honor, I got a question. If they do this, does that relieve the city of Fulton of any of its obligations or liabilities?
Want me to answer that?
Yes, I do.
You know, my position, Ron, I'm in a bit of a quandary because I'm an attorney for the housing authority. As to the, just so everybody's clear, this particular project is only as to 136 units out of 246, I think?
The Burke Buildings, right.
Right. As to these 136 units, the answer is yes.
Okay.
That's exactly what would happen. They're essentially privatized. It's going to be private capital that's going to be funding this.
All right. When they're privatized, will they go to full value assessment?
That's, that's a question that comes up next, that will be brought before you next, and that's why there's references in here to possible conveyance to the industrial development agency. That would be for...
That would be a pilot agreement.
Possibly for pilot agreement. Right now, they're paying taxes, the entire project pays taxes on the unimproved land, not on the improvements.
Right.
And I believe that the intention of the private investors and this, the whole development company is that some tax exemptions have to continue to exist in order for this project to, to attract the investors.
Well, we should get more than what we're getting now.
I'm not going to say that for sure. I don't know.
That'll be determined in a...
Yeah, that'll be determined. It may end up being the same.
Well, the only thing that concerns me about this, if these, if we privatize this, I think privatization, privatization is good in many ways. The only thing is, they will be in direct competition with local landlords that pay taxes. And I've been down this road before with Meadowbrook and everybody else, and I never felt good going out of a meeting when the people that own those places got done with this and they made a good point. I mean, they have investments, too, but they don't get pilot agreements.
Well, Meadowbrook's got one.
That's what started it all. Meadowbrook, Mill Apartments.
Mills got one. So, I mean, it's, you're right, though, in a lot of respects. The other thing, as you know, competition-wise, is they are going to, they would like to have guaranteed so many, I think 34, Section 8 housing vouchers, and that's apparently not going to happen through the CDAs vouchers, but it may be happening through the county.
Through the county, yeah. Well, the county's already in the city with the housing vouchers, right? They're already in competition with the...
But I think, and again, you know, you have to know where I'm coming from, but just from what I've seen of the whole financial situation at Fulton Housing Authority, if this isn't done, they're going to be in a lot of trouble. And then the question of whether the city has to help bail them out is going to be a real serious question.
Well, the only, the only thing I'm wondering with the, with the housing market in Fulton the way it is, I mean, we have, I would say, a glut of housing in Fulton now, rental units. If these units are no longer viable to rent, why can't we just shut them downtown now?
I don't know if it's a question of viability. I mean, the, the apartments themselves aren't in bad shape, and what started this is the state, rather than renew the subsidies, which they stopped a few years ago, as you know.
Right.
They have thrown renovation monies into the projects specifically for these 136 units, which are why they're, you know, why they look good to the privatization end of it. If, well, if it wasn't for this, the whole project itself might fail, and what you just said, I mean, that's, that may ultimately be the decision of this, of this council. I don't know.
Okay. I think you answered my question, though. They're looking for, I mean, they're not going to be assessed like a regular investor.
Well, I think they're going to be coming back asking for some sort of pilot agreement, yes. I think that's true. Because right now, by law, if the property is owned by the housing authority, which it always is right now, they can only assess them on the...
On the, yeah, not the building.
Once it becomes part of a private enterprise, then there's going to have to be negotiations because there's no legal protection as to, as to that.
Tax status.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Dave, you alluded to those, or that particular portion of the housing authority coming back to the city.
No, I did not allude to that. Ron asked that, and I will not answer that question. I don't know if legally it comes back to the city, and there's a prevailing rumor or attitude out there that, for example, when the projects' contracts expire, which one of them actually already has, that boom, the city owns it. And at the state level, I've talked to people at DHCR, and they say no one has answered that question yet because there's only a few projects that that has happened and no one's yet challenged it. And I have notified both the mayor and the executive director of Housing Authority that that's a legal issue that maybe need to ultimately be resolved, and I obviously can't resolve it for either side. So I did not allude to that. Ron asked that.
Well, I'm sorry, then, I've heard you, I heard you mention it, and I wasn't sure exactly how you were mentioning it. Was that just for these 136 units, or is that for the whole, if, this question that is apparently not resolved, or is that for the whole complex?
That, the question that's not resolved that I just mentioned is as to the whole complex. And it's a little more complicated, not only in, not only is there legal issues to whether the entire complex or any part of it reverts to the city, or the city has to maintain it after the contracts expire, but there's also a question as to whether the city is supposed to be helping fund these projects and was supposed to over all the years. And there's a very...
Right.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of people on both sides of that argument, and over the years, that's been argued back and forth with prior administrations and hasn't really been resolved. And maybe with this privatization, especially if the whole project ends up being privatized, that, that may not necessarily...
You won't have to worry about it.
Right.
Okay. That's bottom line I was trying to get at.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed, Your Honor. I think it's a good idea, but I'm not in favor of any more tax-exempt properties. I think that the budget struggle that we're having this year ought to tell us something.
Well, this, this won't take anything off the tax rolls.
Very exempt, per se. No, I understand how it works now. They're paying tax on the property, not the buildings. But if we privatize it, that means we're going to have an investor come in here and want a free ride under taxes, or, or a very small portion of the taxes. And we have people that live in Fulton that have made significant investments in, in rental units, and we're beating them up all the time to try to make them stay up to standard. And they're, and they may be competing with somebody that don't have to pay taxes.
Okay.
I've been through this before, and I, before I went along with it. This time, this time I'm a little, little leery of it.
I have fifth and...
I think the privatization idea is good as long as they pay their way.
Did that motion pass?
I have a fifth and sixth ward oppose. It would pass.
Okay. Next item.
Whereas on Mother's Day in 1999, a young woman named Penny Brown was jogging with her two dogs along a recreational trail near her home in Salamanca, New York. Whereas Penny Brown, a wife, mother, and nurse-midwife, was brutally raped and strangled with a dog leash and was found the next day by police buried under leaves and debris. Whereas the police later questioned and charged a 15-year-old boy with second-degree murder. Whereas New York State law would only allow the murderer to be sentenced as a juvenile, which carries a sentence of five to nine years to life. And whereas the adult sentence would carry a 15 to 25 to life sentence, thus giving a wider sentencing range depending on the seriousness of the crime, the facts surrounding the crime, and the, and this history of the individual. Whereas a juvenile offender who showed no remorse during the sentence process and during the sentencing was called by the judge, a perpetrator and a sexual predator, and sentenced him to nine years to life, and with time served, it is possible this convicted killer could be released in five years. And whereas this attacker had a couple of months older, had he been a couple of months older when he committed this crime, he would be, have received a sentence of 25 years to life. Whereas Mrs. Candy Brown, the sister-in-law of Penny Brown, has written, has written Mayor Stafford and asked that agencies, officials, and legislative bodies join many across the country in the support of Assembly Bill Number A2580, also known as Penny's Law, and would allow a juvenile who commits second-degree murder to be tried and sentenced as an adult. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, members of the common council, and the Fulton Police Department hereby supports this critical legislation and ask that the mayor write to the appropriate members of the assembly urging them to pass Assembly Bill Number A2580. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the assembly along with the letter, and also more importantly, a copy be transmitted to Mrs. Candy Brown, the sister-in-law of the late Penny Brown.
Can we do this on behalf of the police department?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second.
Can we speak for the police department?
Is there any discussion?
I mean, that's what it says.
What's that? I didn't hear that.
I asked a question of David.
I suppose technically not.
I didn't hear the question.
Question is, should the, the words and the police department be in there?
Can we speak on behalf of the police department?
We have, we have checked with Chief Spahn. He has read the legislation. Does not have a problem with it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. On the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
Whereas as there exists a valuable potential resource of individuals who have called upon to assist the common council in developing strategies, whereas members of the Fulton community could serve an important role as participants in the process to advise the common council in the development and implementation of workable solutions. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council establish an advisory committee consisting of a bipartisan cross-section of the Fulton community to assist the common council in developing short-term and long-term remedial plans, review problem areas, and propose creative solutions.
Alderman? Alderman, well, that, that could... Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I proposed this at the last council meeting, and you suggested I draft the resolution, which I've done. And I would strongly encourage the council to support this, and that immediately after the first of the year, that we address as a council how we would form this committee. I expressed some ideas to a few of you, but I didn't want to presume to put that into resolution, so I left it rather general. So I ask for your support, and as I say, after the holidays, we, we could meet and go over the specifics as soon as possible. I'll move it.
I have a question. Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Okay. How many people do you think will be serving on this?
I suggested seven to nine, but again, I want to leave that open to the council to...
Will this be an equal distribution of the wards?
Not necessarily, but definitely from parts of the city. We can talk about that at another meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do we know, in, in a general sense, what's the best way to phrase this? How this committee is going to be selected, and who's going to be running the show? I mean, I'll assume, Joe, you're going to be running the show?
No, not at all.
Okay. Well, in that case, do we know who's going to be in charge and who's going to pick the membership?
One of the, one of the ideas that had been brought forward as we discussed this was the possibility of, of each, possibly each alderman and myself appointing someone to that. Once advisory council was formed, that then they would internally...
Invite others?
Well, they, they would, they would vote in a chairman.
Well, I thought, I just asked if it was going to be equal distribution amongst the city, and I thought Joe said not necessarily.
The mayor just said there was one possibility.
This is one of the, one of the ideas that was, was brought forward. There's a possibility with discussion that everybody is going to be allowed, everyone on the council will be allowed input as to who is, you know, as to serve on this.
In my mind, it's open-ended, and it's open for discussion. If you want to talk about it tonight, fine. If you want to do it at a later meeting, that's fine, too.
I'm not, sir, I just want to know what I'm getting into.
Well, it's, you're getting into whatever to...
For lack of a better phrase, I mean...
The council decides. I just felt basically the council could use some outside expertise, somewhat similar, if you will, to what the county did, when they put together the...
somewhat similar, if you will, to what the county did when they put together the committee to establish the Goals 2000. Not quite that elaborate, but I think we have, as I say, we have some resource out there, and I think we ought to tap into it. How we choose to do that, we can decide.
I think we've constantly asked the community to be involved in what we do, to hear from them. We've asked them to write, to call, to communicate as best as possible. I think this is one more step that we can take to formalize something that we can use as a resource to continue to improve our community. So I think it's a good idea. And I think, as I've said before, we did this type of thing with the garbage program. We brought in one person from each ward, and it was very successful. And I think this is along the same lines.
Well, I think definitely that any information, any research that we can use, suggestions from the general public, we need to look at every one of them. And some will work and some won't. But we need to look at everything and not say no to something without looking at it. I think this will be a good way to get more people involved in trying to find short-term and long-term plans to help us move forward. We have a motion and a second?
Yes, we do, Your Honor.
Any further discussion? On the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's carried. Is there anyone in the audience that has any business to bring before the council? Polling of the council. First word.
The only thing I'd like to say, Your Honor, is I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New... Actually, we've seen them before, the New Year's Eve of Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Second word.
Happy holidays to everybody.
Merry Christmas to everyone on the council, the mayor, all the aldermen, city attorney, city clerk, all of our audience tonight, and everyone in the city of Fulton.
Fourth word.
I'll keep it short. Ditto Bab, Weston.
Very good.
Ditto Bab, sir.
That's the word.
Whatever I said.
He called you a ditto. I don't know what that was.
Fifth word.
Kind of off the subject. I just want to point out, and I told Buck Graham this already, but the guys from the DPW did a hell of a job the Monday after Thanksgiving. Not only did they plow all weekend, but they still picked up the whole east side of town's garbage, and it was all done that Monday. So I just wanted to point that out for those who did not know.
They put a lot of extra effort into it.
And I did talk to Buck, and I told him that they did a good job, so.
Very good. Sixth word.
No, Your Honor, just Merry Christmas to everybody.
Okay. And for myself, I wish everyone, each and every family, a happy holiday, and hopefully we'll see a better year in the year 2003. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending litigation.
I'll have it, Your Honor.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh. Whoa, what was that?